Everyone, it's September the 3rd, 2019. The time is 6:30. We'll begin our City Council meeting at the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please stand and join us?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like our city clerk to do roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder. Weaver, absent. Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's seven present and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight, we're beginning something new. As you see up on the wall here, there is a clock that says three. So during public comments, which is this is the first time we're going to have it for a while, at the beginning of our meeting, we would ask anyone that wants to come forward and speak on any item that is non-agenda, so something that's not on our agenda, to come forward and make public comments. So at this time, whoever would like to come forward and speak on a non-agenda item, you're welcome to do our inaugural speech.
Okay, and this is not on the agenda, right, that you're speaking? I believe so.
Okay, it's not on the agenda. What's the topic that you're speaking on?
I want to correct an oversight I made at the last meeting.
Okay.
And...
And if you could give us your names for the record, then go ahead. And we'll start the clock as soon as you begin speaking.
Mike Selmer, and it's 1462 Indian Hills Drive. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, at the last meeting, I invited all of you to the Wyoming Climate Forum, and I made a terrible oversight that felt very elitist, and I didn't invite city manager Janine Jordan and her staff also, and I wanted to correct that this evening. You can stop me if this is an agenda item.
It's not.
The proclamation for the National Drive Electric Week, which we submitted to the clerk and to you, if it's being considered, I greatly appreciate it. If it's not, because it is somewhat controversial, unfortunately, I hope that the... The clock's not running.
It's not running.
I know.
The inaugural day didn't work.
Anyway, I think that the mechanism by which proclamations are considered by the council should be clearer and perhaps open to consideration by the council, and it's not clear exactly right now how proclamations are considered by the city. While some people might consider the proclamation we submitted somewhat controversial, it shouldn't be. It concerns all of our futures, and that's really all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the public comment period on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public comment period, and now I'd ask the vice mayor if he would take us through changes to the agenda and the setting of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
I think, don't we have a change?
That comes in during consent. Do I put that in now?
That is consent, yes.
And move on to consent, and then I can make that change.
Well, we have to make the changes and then set the agenda.
Okay.
Let me clarify, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah, we should add it.
Let's do the change to the consent agenda.
The one change on the consent agenda is adding a C-SPAN presentation October 8th under 8F scheduled meetings. That would be number three. So I will re-smit and say that the... I would move that the changes to the agenda be approved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second by Councilor Schuster. All in favor of that change, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Twenty opposed. Okay, so the change has been made. Now, do you want to set the...
I would move that the agenda be set as changed.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to set the agenda by Councilor Schuster. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is taken care of. Now we move on to the next item on our agenda. There are no proclamations today or public hearings. There is a public hearing. I would ask our city clerk if she would read the notice to the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that on the 12th date of August 2019, an application was received in the office of the city clerk for a new restaurant liquor license, number R64, for Palermo's Italian Restaurant LLC, doing business as Palermo's Italian Restaurant, at 207 South Third Street, Laramie, Wyoming. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to this license application will be held Tuesday, September 3rd, at 6:30 PM in Council chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, at 6:30 PM in Council chambers.
Thank you. Are there... Is there anyone that would like to come up and make public comments regarding this liquor license for Palermo's? If so, you can come forward and either speak for or against the application by Palermo's for a liquor license.
Restaurant liquor license.
Restaurant liquor license, correct. One's very expensive and the other one is sort of expensive. Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Next, we go to announcements. We have, I believe, one announcement. I'll turn this over to our... City Attorney, Bob Suther.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'd like to recognize Holly Austin-Belaski as the employee of the month. I don't know which month. I think it was July, because we couldn't get her here last month. You recognized Holly not that long ago for receiving an award in the state of Wyoming for an outstanding impaired driving prosecutor. She is our city prosecutor. She and I go way back. She was a student of mine way back in the day at the law school. She recovered from that to do a fine job for the city. Before she went to law school, and you might want to ask her about this, she had an interesting modeling career as a young woman, and then it went south and she went to Colorado State University. Don't hold that against her. Somewhere along the way, she met Jeremy Belaski, who's an outstanding member of our fire fighting force. They have two kids, Remi. Raise your hand, Remi. Yeah. Lilly? Hello, Lilly. And I can attest personally that she's just a pleasure to work with. I do want to say more seriously that a lot of... All city employees have a difficult job under the circumstances and with the resources that we have. It's particularly tough generally being a prosecutor in life, because you're juggling a lot of balls. You're paying close attention to making sure that people's constitutional rights are honored, and you think about that every day, to make sure that the Constitution is taken care of as people come into our court system. You're trying to satisfy the judge, and then finally, you're either accused of being too tough or too easy. She has to juggle all that, and she does it with great style and with great care for the people that are brought before this municipal court. So with that...
Ms. Austin-Belaski?
Thank you.
Also, it's good to know all of your other credentials, which are impressive.
Honorable Mayor, council, yes, Bob made me blush with that one. Nancy Oakland-Potter did a really great job incorporating that into the newsletter when it went out to everyone, so I've gotten quite a few comments from various friends and coworkers to the city of Laramie. But no, I'm very thankful to Janine for putting my name up for the award and to Bob for all the very kind and very embarrassing comments, and simply for the recognition. It's really nice to be in front of you twice in such a short amount of time. I'm humbled and honored. I think I have just the best job in the world. I absolutely love my job day to day. I love my office, working with Bob and Ashley and Kim, and I couldn't ask for anything any better. So my husband and I love Laramie, and I'm happy to work and be a part of the city, and so thanks for the recognition.
Well deserved, and stay there, because we're going to ask your husband and your children to come up. We're going to get a picture with you and the city council, so if you'd come up here. Come on up.
He's showing.
Looks like you've got two models in the making.
One shy, one's not.
I wonder if this is one?
Yes. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right. This time, I ask anyone on the council, are there any items on the agenda that you need to make disclosure that there would be any conflicts of interest on this agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is approval of the consent agenda, so we'll turn that back over to our vice mayor, Councilor... Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved as changed, that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded again by Councilor Schuster. I'd ask the city clerk if she would do roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. So those items on the consent agenda then have been approved. Now we move to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number 11, and I'd ask Councilor Schuster if you would introduce that for us.
I move to postpone original ordinance number 2002 to the October 1st City Council Regular Agenda Meeting, annexing approximately six acres of property located in unincorporated Albany County, located at 4503 Bobble Lake Lane.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we postpone this at the request of the developer, so any comments or anything that comes from the council or the audience needs to be on the postponement only. So we don't... We won't be hearing anything new until it's brought back onto the floor as an item to discuss. Anything from the council? Anything from the audience? Okay, let's go to roll call.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
So that's been postponed to October 1st. Next item is item number 12, Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. I move to postpone City Council Resolution Number 2019-59 to the October 1st City Council Regular Meeting, certifying the Planning Commission action regarding a comprehensive plan amendment for the change of future land use map 3-2 to the 2000 City Laramie Comprehensive Plan from estate to auto-urban multifamily of approximately six acres of property located at 4503 Bobble Lake Lane.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Pierce for the postponement of this also. Anything from the council on the postponement? Anything from the public? Roll call.
Pierce.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, now we move to item number 13, Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. I move to postpone the third and final reading of original ordinance number 2003 to the October 1st City Council Regular Agenda Meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce. Anything from the council on the postponement? A hand from... Yes, on the postponement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on the postponement. I think sometimes, for a matter of public record, the council has at least some brief explanation as to why the postponement's come forward. It's not a surprise or certainly any type of secret that this has been a controversial item as it's come up. There are a number of unresolved aspects that both the developer, city staff, and the council want more time to look at, and as a result, a postponement of these three items has been deemed appropriate with the hope that we can identify some solutions to several of the issues that have been pointed out in the discussion before. And that is why the postponement of these three items is coming forward tonight, and I do think that members of the public, interested members of that community, are owed at least that much explanation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Thank you for that. Good explanation. Anything else from the council?
Maybe not spill or create some...
Anything from the public regarding the postponement of these items that we're obviously working on? We will come to a conclusion, but we're working on that, so... All right, let's do a roll call on this item number 13.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Councilor Schuster, number 14.
Thank you. Here's a surprise one. I move to postpone the Little Laramie Valley subdivision preliminary plot to the October 1st City Council Regular Agenda Meeting.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded again by Councilor Pierce. Any comments, questions regarding the postponement of this item from the council? Anything from the public? Okay, let's do roll call on item number 15, which by the way concludes the items that are all tied together linked here. This will be comeback of a very important item on the 1st of October, so another neighborhood party on the 1st of October. City clerk.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, usually at this point, we take a break. Let's go to item number 16, and that's Councilor Harrington.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I'm sorry, fifteen.
All right. I move that the city council...
I'm sorry, Councilor Stalder. I was... We were moving so darn fast, I just skipped right past you.
It's just fine.
So that's item number 15. Thank you, Councilor Stalder.
I move that the city council approve the application for a new restaurant liquor license, number R34, to Palermo's Italian Restaurant LLC, doing business as Palermo's Italian Restaurant located at 207 South Third Street, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term September 4th, 2019, through May 7th, 2020, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce. City clerk is going to brief us on this.
Thank you, Mayor and council. On August 12th, we received an application for Palermo's Italian Restaurant LLC, located at 207 South Third Street. This location has previously been Pawpaws or Eight Bytes, just to give familiarity to the site. The dispensing room location will be the same dispensing room that has been previously used by Eight Bytes. It's an eight-by-10 room in the northwest corner of the building. The application has been reviewed internally as well as by the liquor division, and it does appear to be complete. With that... I do not see the applicant. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. He does plan on serving Italian food and hopes to open in the near future, which is why we would begin the licensing term tomorrow. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Someone's just walking in, so you might check to see if it's him. They walked in the front door.
They may have thought they'd have more time. Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Oh, they do. Anything from the public regarding this application?
He's here for something else.
Yeah, okay. So any comments from the council before we vote?
Good luck. We... Sorry.
Councilor Weaver?
I agree with Councilor Schuster. It'd be really great to see a business come in there and be successful, and joking aside, you know, normally I might be a little bit unimpressed with someone not showing up, but I think there may have been some difficulty engaging time on our agendas, and I hope they do well. Their menu looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. Italian sauces take time, so they're working on that.
That's right.
Just to date some of us, I remember when that used to be occupied by Dr. Finfrocks.
Yep. That was a pretty rowdy place there, Jim.
That was a successful business.
So the tradition continues. Good food. All right. All right. Anything from anyone before we vote? Let's vote on this. Roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so that passes. Next item, we're going now to Councilor Harrington for item number 16.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2019-68, authorizing the submittal of a federal mineral royalties capital construction account grant to the State Loan and Investment Board in the amount not to exceed $750,000 for West Laramie stormwater improvements, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
I'm going to give this to the vice mayor.
I was on the roll.
It's been moved and seconded by Vice Mayor Gabriel. Mr. Webb.
Our mayor, excuse me, city council, we're just seeking authorization to submit the application for the MRG grant to the State Loan Investment Board for $750,000 for the West Laramie Storm Drain Improvement Project. The total project is estimated to cost $1.1 million, and the money from this grant would go a long ways to get us there. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Mr. Webb, anything, questions from the audience and the public regarding this grant, $750,000? Okay, any comments from the council?
It'd be great if we got it, because it would help immensely to take care of that much of that job for that.
Councilor Schuster is speaking regarding the ongoing improvements that we have so that we get storm drainage, so that we can pave Wyoming, that we can continue to bring pavement projects into West Laramie and bring that up to the standard of days, so... But they're looking forward to, to make sure that we can have all those improvements necessary in that part of the city. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If memory serves, the city has a good track record of success with submitting these for these types of infrastructure projects, Mr. Mayor. I think there's always demand for the federal mineral royalties. Do we have any reason to believe that we won't be successful in pursuing those for this needed project out there this year? A shake of the head will do. Thank you.
Honorable City Council, I can't get... I don't know. It depends on the needs of other communities and how much funds are available through the grant program at the time.
Which are, of course, great across the state.
Right, and sometimes, from what I've seen, they'll get five grant applications, and last time they had 35.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And there are times in the city as competing applications. This time, we just have this one application to the mineral royalties grant application process. Any comments from the council? Roll call.
Any public comment?
Did we not do a public comment? Anything from the public? You can say, "Don't take all that money." All right, then let's go to roll call.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
That was a yes.
McKinney, absent. Harrington.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so that passes. Item number 17, this is Councilor O'Doherty. Now, she... Just so I can do an explanation, this is an item we're bringing back, and so it's going to be a little bit different, but I'll let Councilor O'Doherty bring back the reintroduction, and then we'll...
So I request the city clerk read the item as it was introduced at the last...
Title for the... For this item, okay?
Read the title for the last... For this item.
So the title of this item is "Consideration of On-Street Parking at Fourth and Clark Street Intersection Upon Referral of a Resident Modification Request from the Traffic Commission."
Okay, thank you, city clerk. Now, this has been introduced to the council. We have postponed it for today, and so I'm going to ask the city clerk now to bring back the motion as it was brought onto the floor, so that we can reintroduce this for discussion from the council, and we'll go from there. So, city clerk, if you would read the motion as it was introduced by Councilor O'Doherty.
The motion was made by O'Doherty, seconded by Schuster, to reinstate on-street parking at Fourth and Clark as it existed previously when the intersection was signalized in August 2018.
Okay, so it's back on the floor now, so it's open for discussion from the city council, then obviously we'll go to the public and then see where it goes from there. So let's start with the city council. Councilor Harrington.
Mayor, I move to amend the motion by striking the section that reads "as it existed previously when the intersection was signalized in August 2018," and to add, to specifically include spots 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 10, as outlined in the handout provided by the City of Laramie Engineering Department at our August 6th, 2019 meeting. You also have that handout before you this evening, and if anybody would like a further explanation of the spots, it would be...
Does the audience... Are we going to bring this up on the screen, or does the audience need a copy of this to circulate, so they know what numbers we're talking about?
Point of information.
Okay, yes.
Could Councilor Harrington repeat those numbers again?
Yes.[1684.12] Does the audience, are we gonna bring this up on the screen or does the audience need a copy of this to circulate so they know what numbers we're talking about?
Point of information.
Okay, yes.
Could Counsel Harrington repeat those numbers again?
The specific numbers are 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 10. So that would be six, the furthest spots on the intersections, but one spot on the northeast and southwest corners and the furthest two spots on the northwest and southeast corners.
Now, did we get a second to that amendment?
I will second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by our Vice Mayor. So now we're gonna go to the council and we're gonna ask you to speak to the amendment. Did you want to speak on this first of all? Our engineer, Eric Japp, is gonna speak first of all and then we'll, then we'll go to the council.
Honorable Mayor members of council, I just do want to comment on this amendment that engineering staff cannot support this amendment as it will make the intersection unsafe. As we discussed last time, we already had put back as much parking to this intersection as we could and if this amendment passes, and as we noted in the past, we are bound ethically to report this to the State Board as this item is changing the professional engineering design, which is in violation of State Statute 3329401, practicing professional engineering with a license. So just wanted to say that to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other, anything else from staff regarding this before we discuss this on the City Council members? So as you can see, it's coming up, there's a diagram there and can you see the numbers in the little black boxes along the sidewalks? Starting to see them?
Yeah, they count left to right, top to bottom.
Do we have a pointer where we can point out the spots that we're being, that we are considering in this amendment to bring back? Do you have a mouse?
So it goes on all the screens? Yeah, I'd like to speak to that if I can.
Well, this one. Thank you.
I could just take the mouse, the wireless mouse from me. Okay, now, wherever you guys go, I'll, I'll point it out.
Okay, let's go to Counsel Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna speak on the amendment for a moment. This is meant as a, I'm bringing this forward as a compromise between the recommendation from Traffic Commission, which means they all of the parking, and a recommendation from the Engineering Department. So I just wanna clarify the intention of this amendment.
Okay, Counsel Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor, myself, and Counsel Harrington several weeks ago took a little tour up there and we looked at the situation at Fourth and Clark and I think Counsel Harrington has indicated that 60% of the parking would be reinstated. Is that the?
Of what's shown here, of the 10 spots.
60% would be reinstated, so I think that is a valid compromise. We've talked to the residents in that area. They seem to be in approval of this and it made total sense to us just looking at the actual makeup of the intersection that there was a lot of parking that just, it didn't make a lot of sense to us that it had to be eliminated. So compromise, I think, is the key word here. Traffic Commission wanted it all reinstated and I think at 60%, it makes sense as a council and the residents to hopefully be on board with us and you can't make everybody happy all the time and so I think this is something that City Council can live with and the residents are in approval. So I think that's, that's a pretty good compromise.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Counsel Stalder.
Just wondering if staff could speak to how much notice this type of thing, you know, how much notice you typically have? I think that was one of the frustrations that I heard was sort of, oh, we woke up and the curbs were yellow, but I don't know if there's like a process or a procedure for how much notice this type of thing gets.
Honorable Mayor, Counsel Stalder, this one was unique. It didn't follow the normal notification process, I will say that. The notification that we usually do is the item, if an item appears before Traffic Commission, it does, it is sent out for public comment. Any changes in that area, the residents are notified. We usually give a few weeks' notice. We actually do have a policy, internal policy in engineering, more of a procedure of how we do that. Notification is sent out to everybody that is gonna be affected. We usually give a few weeks' notice for that. That then does appear before the Traffic Commission and then the notification for public meetings for Traffic Commission City Council are also followed with that.
What was unique about this situation that that wasn't followed?
With this one, it was because of working, trying, we found out, while we knew it was coming, it came much quicker than we were anticipating with Third and Clark light being removed and we were trying to time those together. We had studied the intersection ahead of time and we're planning on it, however, we, that one, that occurred a little bit quicker than we were planning on occurring and that's why this one was done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stalder. Any other questions from the council? Counsel Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for the city attorney, sorry. I have some, of course, concern, I think anybody would, that by supporting this amendment, which I intend to do, but contradicting policy guidelines given to us by the city engineering staff, some of which were outlined just a few moments ago, I need to hear an opinion about what the City Council's decision to do that may mean and if ultimately in doing so, are we risking it being a non-compliance with state or federal standards and requirements?
I mean, Mayor, council, I mean, I think through the various presentations you've received, applying the recognized engineering and federal, state standards, I mean, that's why that intersection was designed that way when, when the signal was taken down. And I think as you heard, our, our engineering staff has to make a report about that to protect their license.
All right. I appreciate the answer, Mr. Mayor. So then my comment following that, that information will be that although I do intend to support this because I think we're trying to do some community problem solving, I think it probably has to be said that if authorities outside of the City of Laramie and Albany County weigh in on this, I'm not sure what that means for the future and I think that probably just has to be stated this evening. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Counsel Schuster?
Just, just as Counsel Weaver has said, we are going to get a new Traffic Commission online and when we do that, and I am personal friends with one of the state people on this and asked them about it and basically they said the same thing, but they said that this needs to be settled in Laramie. They said, "If you think we're gonna come down hard on you for something like this, no, we're not. This is, this is your sandbox, you people need to get along." And he says, I was really surprised when they suspended the Traffic Commission. And he says that, basically, he says, "Do what you need to do, let the Traffic Commission come back and let the Traffic Commission then settle this after they come back." But he said, "What you do in the interim, you do in the interim."
Thank you, Counsel Schuster. One, one just note, and that is that as we are working forward to get all of our policies updated and everything here, that doesn't mean that the Traffic Commission as it sits now is going to be replaced. They may all come back just as the same members they had before and just jump right back in and continue to do what they do. It won't be, there are some, there's, I think, two or more seats that are gonna come, you know, up for reappointment and will be, is it three of them? Okay, three. So there is a possibility that it'll be, have a different group of people, but there's also a very good chance that those people who've been working so hard will be reappointed. We don't know until that process is completed. And also, I think that the questions that the council has been bringing forward is, what is our legal exposure from this? And we've heard from our city attorney and we have discussed this, I think Counsel Schuster has brought up that this is something that is gonna be dealt with also, you know, appropriately by our staff where they're, they're going to send a letter indicating that, you know, this is not their recommendation, but the council took action regarding this issue and, you know, we, we have to accept that responsibility. I personally would, when I look at this, you know, as was mentioned by Vice Mayor Gabriel, we spent quite a bit of time down there looking at this and, you know, we're not professionals, we're not engineers, but when we looked at that, it just seemed to me like that the safety and, you know, that would be caused by replacing some of these parking spots was not something that would, would strike fear in my heart. But again, I'm not a professional, I'm not an engineer and when I see what they bring forward to us, this is the best recommendation that they can have because it's the thing that's, they have guidelines and things that they have to follow. I have gone back and forth where I'm gonna say, "I'm gonna support the staff" and then I say, "I'm gonna look at this and say, 'What do I think would be the very best solution to this?'" To me, I was hoping we didn't bring back as many spots as you did, but I'm gonna support this. I'm gonna support it by bringing back this many spots because when I sit there and think, "How far would a car have to travel?" Or how far, you know, "How far can they see?" And things like that, this is not a complex, but it is complicated. So it's, it's a tough decision for the council, but I think it's important for us to make that decision tonight and not postpone this any longer. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this amendment and then we'll see where it goes from there. Now, let's go to the public. So you trying to get a feel where we are? Yes, if you'd?
I'm just being me.
All right.
This has nothing to do with.
Okay. Legitimize.
I'm Judy Snook. My question is, and I just haven't traveled down Fourth Street much, partly because of all the construction on Grand. Is there a four-way stop there?
No.
There's nothing.
No, there is, there's stop signs.
There's two ways.
Yeah, stop, but on Fourth Street, there are no stop signs. The stop signs are on the.
Okay.
Clark.
On Clark, okay.
Yes.
So what would it take for us to install, for safety's sake, to reinstate the parking spaces and put in a four-way stop? Is that one of the?
It's an option.
State engineering concerns?
Yes.
Okay, or a traffic light?
That's a concern also.
It's like.
From our staff.
Okay.
But thank you, Judy. Those are things that have been brought to us. They recommend against it also.
I'm not, I'm behind the A-game, so, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Thanks for all you do for us. All right. And this is our chair of our Traffic Commission?
Suspended your Traffic Commission.
Is waiting for the green light to start back full speed, but anyway.
And I, well, I haven't stopped. I'm Nancy Sindalar, I am the chair of the Suspended Traffic Commission. I'm speaking for myself.
Okay. Nancy, Nancy, before you start, we, the items that we have had before us seem to be on and on and on, so would you bring to us?
I'm gonna bring, I was gonna, I have five pages of stuff and three maps and two diagrams, however, what it boils down to is the state law says, I believe it's 20 feet from the radius. What you're doing is great. I missed one of the names, honorable counsel, Counselor Gabriel, Mayor Shumway, and someone else that, Councilman Harrington, I want to thank you for doing a good job. Yeah, this is what the Traffic Commission does.
I know you do.
You know, so I just want, that's, that's what it boils down to, that all five pages just, back with it. Cause I, I think this, this is pretty darn close to make, being perfect, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Okay.
I'm not gonna argue with you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comments? One more chance for the council to make comments on the amendment. Yes, Counsel Pierce.
So I'm not gonna support the amendment. I really appreciate our engineers and I really appreciate our professional staff in all areas. This issue has been before us since spring of this year. We have tossed it around back and forth many, many times. To say that all of us have not driven through that intersection or that area numerous times is an understatement, right? I mean, we are all down Fourth Street, I would assume. When this was first before us in the spring, I was out there paying attention, looking. I think every time I got in my car, I purposely drove through that intersection, always able to find parking. So I, I don't understand how none of us here, being engineers, could even presume to think that, that we should disagree with our engineers. We hire professional staff for a reason. I was a gal who was happy to survive differential equations back in the 70s. These guys did it with their eyes closed, right? And, and they're good at their job, so. And I would also like to mention that the engineering staff also compromised previously. They gave up for other spots for this intersection, so this is actually the second compromise. This is a total of 10 spots that we are now proposing to return. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel Pierce, and I also echo gratitude for our professional staff. That's why this is such a difficult decision for me to make. They are outstanding in the work they do. They're very thorough and they do what professionals do, so again, we thank our staff for doing this. My vote has no reflection in my mind on the work that they do. It's, you know, anyway. Counsel Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate that and I wanna, I wanna echo that too. The presumption isn't there that we know better than the city's engineering staff. Unfortunately, there's just difficult jobs all around and one of the jobs that we have as the elected officials for the city is to act as that interlocutor buffer between the public and the city staff. And sometimes there are things that there are great amounts of disagreement about and that is where often we have to make decisions that are, as the mayor said, difficult. I, I hope, and I don't believe it is, that this is regarded by members of our staff as, as a rejection of all the hard work they did to get where they are and the work that they've done on the project. That's not it. This is us doing our job, which is trying to try to respond to the public and there's just not a perfect solution often. So I'll support the amendment. I understand that there are some serious concerns with it, just like there have been serious concerns about everything regarding this decision from the very beginning over the course of the time that was mentioned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Schuster.
Thank you. When the Traffic Commission is going up again, two things I will ask them to consider and even though it's been recommended against it is, we do have a four-way stop at Fourth and Sheridan. And I know when it was first installed, it was a problem. A lot of people ran it. There's sometimes you have to get used to when we put up a stop sign, but it is completely legal. Also, on 9th and 15th, we go from a 30 to a 20, back to a 30. So in this, I will recommend that they check that out too, that which will benefit our city better will be, do we reduce the speed limit for 10 blocks like they do through the university section and bring it back up to 30? Because they do it right at 15th at a stoplight. Then they have two stoplights in the 20 mile an hour section on 15th and then they bring it back up to 30 at approximately the cemetery. So on this, I wanna look at all ideas which will best suit the City of Laramie and the people of the City of Laramie who are our bosses.
Counsel Harrington, thank you. Counsel Schuster?
Thank you, Mayor, and maybe to that point through you, I think that we have been presented that information by city staff, by the engineering staff. And I worry that us making a decision and then continuing to drag that decision on is maybe a mistake. I think it's important for us to make a decision and head forward. I am curious, and if I can ask maybe a question to engineering staff, is there a, an opportunity to revisit what we have in code to make this a, maybe not now, maybe not specifically to Fourth and Clark, but as we imagine these other, kind of like the historic part of Laramie, as we imagine these instances are going to occur again at other intersections, is there an opportunity for us to put something in code that insulates you so that you aren't having to send letters every time we work on an intersection? I think that's a fair question, Mayor.
Agent Japp?
Honorable Mayor, Counsel Harrington, staff has, has actually been working on that for the last few years of putting something in code in regard to that. It, it's gonna be difficult to say like 20 feet because the, the analysis that was done to this intersection, as I've stated here before, is based on physics. You know, there's not much, we, we can't, you know, violate laws of physics as we, as we go and design stuff. There's been talk of like a, a 20-foot that could be painted at every intersection. However, that'd be no design that would be done with that. That would just become a city standard of just putting 20 feet around every intersection or something like that. But that wouldn't address the necessary, the site triangle concerns. That would just be a general standard that the city could create, that no parking is allowed 20 feet around any intersection. If a site triangle was reported or anything like that, it would have to be treated the same as this one. We could develop a standard template, but it would be modeled after the same system that we did here.
Okay. Can I just follow up to that? So, if we were to institute a policy that would establish like a site triangle added for the creep, which you guys have already compromised on, plus one spot, is that something that would be like a compromise in the future that would all? I mean, I hate to get into like a bunch of hypotheticals, I'm just kinda curious what options we have.
Yeah, Your Honorable Mayor, yeah, Council Harrington. We, we probably wouldn't support that, just because with the creep, you know, it's, it's based on the driver's eyesight and where it's going. And if you can't see that oncoming car, it's, it's creating that unsafe condition. Fourth and Clark, we already did the creep. And the front nose of the vehicle, based on the design that's in front of you right now, is already at the edge of the travel lane. If, in order for a vehicle to see any oncoming cars at this intersection, you will be in the lane of travel and being hit by the oncoming car.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes, Council.
I didn't want to interrupt anybody because I think that was, this is point of order, that was valuable, and we need to investigate that. But it's off topic, it's off the amendment, and it's off the current discussion.
Right, right now, we're working on the amendment, so let's stick with that. Thank you. Anything else on the amendment? So, we've had the public, we've had the council, let's vote on the amendment.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney, absent.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, one no, and one absent, Your Honor.
So, the amendment is added now to the on-street parking consideration, and so now we're back to the item which was introduced as amended. Are there any comments or questions regarding this now that we are back onto the considerations on the street parking item? Council Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, back to the previous conversation, the points brought up by Council Harrington. You know, I think we, we need to investigate some sort of long-term approach that Mr. Japp and Council Harrington were talking about and, and see what our options are. Granted, our engineer pointed out, there's only so much we can do because we're bound by, well, the laws of physics for one, and then some other guidelines that we really can't be in a habit of. I think this is a particularly unique situation, given its location and its former sort of general connection to the old bridge and the rest of the system that was there. And that's, that's something that's been a factor. But I think it's well, it's well said that we need to take a look at that and work with our future traffic commission and, and our engineering staff to see what our options are before maybe we have a situation like this come up again, because it, it does seem likely that it may. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Council O'Doherty?
I'm really uncomfortable with going against the engineering recommendations, but in this situation, because the, our own policies weren't followed, the issue that Council Stalder brought up, where the residents were unaware until it happened, if they'd known ahead of time, they might have decided to sell a business, you know. So, we, they weren't given that information, so that's the only reason I'm gonna vote for it. I'm uncomfortable with not following the engineering guidelines.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? All right, anything from the public, comments or questions regarding this item as it's been amended? Back to the council. Anything further? One thing I will say to the audience, that we have not only here, but also those listening in, the city has shown a great deal of effort in, in dealing with this and spent quite a bit of time, money, and compromise trying to strike a position that would be acceptable to everyone. That's not possible. But what, what we have before us now is what we're to vote on, and that's what the council does. We make some tough decisions. And also, again, I think it's been stated very well, we appreciate our staff, we appreciate our community, those that have brought these things forward to us, and we appreciate the responsibility that we have. We take it seriously. I'm speaking for myself, but also for the council, because I know they feel the same way. So, with that said, let's go to the vote, and this is on the item as amended.
McKinney, absent.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, one no, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so now that's, that's adopted, the changes have been made as indicated. Now, let's go, yes, Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Who was the second on all this?
Uh, that was, is as introduced the first time, so--
So, we don't need a second?
No, it was brought back, so it was introduced by O'Doherty, I think, second by, who was it, Schuster?
Yeah, Schuster was the original second.
But it was just brought back onto the table.
Okay.
Yes, before we go to public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, and for the residents who live in the area, about the changes, how quickly they could occur. Does anybody have an answer for that, if I may ask?
It's gotta be streets.
Put you on the spot, Mr. Webb.
Yeah. Honorable Mayor, City Council. I will get with our street division tomorrow and see what we can do. I would anticipate we get that done in the next two, three weeks. But I will get with them, see what their schedule looks like, and get it sorted out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Buck. Okay, now we're back to public comments. We're gonna get this clock working. This is a public comment, again, on non-agenda items. Anyone in the public who would like to speak to the council may come forward, state your name, and then you have three minutes to make your comments. Okay, seeing none, now we'll move to the considerations, the future council work sessions. So, is there anyone in the council that'd like to bring forward any future council work sessions? Topics or items? Council O'Doherty?
Since a lot of this decision was based on the 80, 80 percentile or 85th percentile of how people drive on Fourth, I would like to look for calming measures, like speed bumps on, on Fourth. We have, I mean, virtually all of our intersections are unsafe by these standards. So, we need to really examine some traffic calming, and I, maybe that's something down the road for traffic commission. But I, I just want it to be on our radar. And I know that speed bumps are used in other places, and maybe we can't use those because of snow rebuff on stuff. But I would, I would like to, I would like to enforce the law and make people go 30 miles an hour, so, so that it would be safer. So, that's what I, I don't know how to-- Can we talk about traffic calming on Fourth?
I'd, I'd be supportive of the conversation about traffic calming around intersections in Laramie.
Okay, we have a, on our, I was looking at our future council work sessions. There is one on parking and transportation. You could probably add it to that or else make it stand alone. So, anyway, feel, not if you'll just make note of that. Council Pierce?
So, on a different subject, I was kinda curious and didn't really fully understand Mr. Selmer's comment about the proclamation process. I'm wondering if there is any other information that we need to know about regarding that. I saw the proclamation, and I commented on it with him and a few other folks via email. I'm not exactly sure what--
I think that'd be a good topic.
What he was getting at.
I'll, I'll, I'll say this. There was a proclamation, we get proclamations that come in all the time. Some of them come in, they wanna, you know, have, you know, have the city council support, you know, things that really are, you know, national, world issues and things that really don't seem to translate into, to this. That item was, there was a comment that went to Mr. Selmer, former city attorney, saying that we need to, you know, this, this needs to be something where he said, reword it where it focuses on the benefits for the city of, city of Laramie. I, you know, as far as proclamations, we, we get them all the time. Sometimes we have three or four in one night. I think any proclamation that is brought in can be focused on what is important to not only the council, but also to the community. I remember I read one of them for a, some kind of a condition or disease that I had never heard of in my life, but I thought it was good for education. This one that came from them started off making some statements that was probably controversial, and so it was asked for them to reword it, to rework it, and bring it back. Which, obviously, when it comes back, there's gonna be, if there's someone on council that wants to bring that forward, we're gonna find somebody that will read it for the education of, not only the public, but for ourselves. I, I appreciate Mr. Selmer's bringing that to our attention. I remember that we all had a chance to take a look at it. It never got to the point where it came, it never got to the point where it came to the council because the letter came saying, let's try to do this. But now what we need to do as a council, in our code of conduct perhaps, is say, what is acceptable for us to, you know, speak to from this dais, you know, by either the mayor, or the vice mayor, or someone on the council? What is appropriate, and what is something that really is not relevant? If it's not relevant, we probably oughta stay away from it. If it has any relevancy for anybody, then we'll, we'll bring it forward. Council O'Doherty?
The distinction I saw is that, that if it's an advocacy thing, it should be voted on by all the council. I guess in the form of a resolution, but if it's just, if it's an advocacy statement, then if we don't even see, we don't all see the statement before, and you get up and say something outrageous, that most of us would sit there and say, what? I don't agree with that. You know, we have a problem there, so I do think we have to get it, we have to hone in on--
That's a good point, and it was discussed by our city clerk, that we could have those proclamations out before the council so that that decision can be made in pre-council. So, if it's something like, we want to have, you know, a ban on buffaloes in Wyoming, this doesn't seem to make any sense, you know, or something like that. City clerk?
Mayor, in speaking with Janine today, we have talked about adding the code of conduct on the October 22nd work session. So, if you bring your thoughts, you know, to kinda work through some of that stuff to that meeting.
We'll, we'll include that then in that portion where we talk about code of conduct. All right, anything else from anybody regarding the items for future discussions, future work sessions? And, and I will say this. You know, to bring something forward from the council, I think our code of conduct says there needs to be someone to mention it and someone to show support. So, it needs to be two from the council to do it. I don't think there's anyone on the council that has a right to demand that their voice be heard over the entire council if there's, if there isn't some support for that. So, but we'll talk about that in our work session. That includes the vice mayor, and the mayor, and anybody else. We need to make sure that we give everyone a chance to be heard, because that's what you elect to do, is be heard on the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm a little bit confused by your statement there. Are you talking about with regard to bringing--
Proclamations.
Proclamations for?
Proclamations only, yes.
All right, or, because that, that rule is also in place, I believe, for work session items?
Yes, that's correct.
But I don't think it is for individual agenda items.
On the code of conduct, we're gonna deal with that regarding proclamations, because that's the concern.
Because, right, and I don't think that rules in effect on individual agenda items because they have to receive a second to be discussed.
Right, correct.
Right, but any council member, you are correct. Council Weaver, you know, that, a council member can support an item to have it placed on the agenda for discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
But it may not receive any discussion if it doesn't receive a second. So, they all follow a pretty similar process.
So-- So--
Council Pierce?
So, is it correct to say that because this proclamation was electric cars, it, it created too much controversy to be considered for a proclamation?
I don't think we saw the electric cars proclamation. I don't think it came to the council. I don't even-- City Attorney?
Trying to say this, or, I, I didn't give legal advice on this, but it appeared in that proclamation, I can go over it with you, that the electric car things were non-controversial. Setting it up was the controversial part. And so, the council, we'll have to set up a system where council can make some decisions about that. Well, I'll be blunt then, I'll be more blunt. If, if, if to, if to talk about electric cars, you need to attack the fossil fuel industry, that seems unnecessary.
And that was somehow in the--
Yes.
All the warehouse.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
If you were gonna resupport bicycle, you know, commuting and transportation in Laramie, I don't think that requires, I'm being very blunt, doesn't require an attack on the auto industry. It's that ki-, and that's a tough, there's, it's hard to define that line, right?
Right.
But it exists somewhere, and I don't know how council wants to sort that out.
And we will. We'll discuss that in our work session, on how to introduce proclamations. Anything else from anybody? Okay. Let's go to item number 20, and that's Council Pierce.
Oh, sorry. I move to adjourn to executive session regarding land negotiations, Wyoming statute 16 dash 4 dash 405, lowercase a, number seven.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to adjourn, and I think we can just do this roll call, correct?
Voice roll.
Voice roll, I mean. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's try to, it's 7:38, let's try--